Can everybody stand for the pledge, please? Mr. Naom, can you lead us in the pledge?
Last week.
Oh, did you? Okay.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
If we can have a moment of silence for Mr. Shelley Pruss, who passed away. Thank you.
Come on, give me a break. That's my...
Mr. Crowe, come on down. Where are you? There you are.
Good evening, everyone. This is Barxale, Joe, Clorante, 87, Borden Road. Thank you, Mayor, for your moment of silence for Mr. Pruss. And so I just wanted to take a minute to pay a little homage to Mr. Pruss. Shelley passed away on February 4th, and Shelley was engaged in many areas of our community. He had a passion for local politics. He served on the town council, zoning board, planning board, and the Board of Finance. Mr. Pruss was also a local businessman, was a staple on Bank Street, on Bank Street, and operated the men's factory outlet for almost two decades. Shelley also took on various humanitarian roles in our community such as social services and job placement. Mr. Pruss was also an avid sports fan. And when I was a kid, Mr. Pruss was the, or one of the members of the youth hockey board here in town, and never missed a game, or was unwilling to drive us young boys to sports. So I've got some very fond memories of Mr. Pruss. So, Mr. Pruss was a wonderful member of our community, and he'll certainly be missed. And I appreciate your moment of silence. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, too.
Thank you, Joe. Twenty-five Candlewood Shore, Diane.
That's Dee. Thank you so much. When am I passed that for you? Because there's no need. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You mayor, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
Did you pass that?
No worries.
And that's mine. Lots extras. Okay, so I am Diane Play from twenty-five Candlewood Shore, and thank you for hearing me out. So I explained this to Mayor Bass once before, but I think it's kind of an interesting way of thinking about things. I consider Mayor Bass to be the CEO of New Milford. You members of council are its board members, and I and my fellow residents are its shareholders. Members of the boards and committees and task forces that you have created have recently come to you requesting funds for research purposes to inform their scope of work. This concerns me. It is the right thing to do, but quantitative research should be conducted after qualitative research is conducted to provide... Sorry, I just had a plane from Australia. I'm a little beclumped. Anyway, so yes, so qualitative needs to happen before quantitative research is done in order to provide data about residents' perceptions regarding the quality of life, its services, programs, and more in New Milford. This overview will perform a baseline overview of what is good and what needs to be improved. This will aid the special groups that seek specific opinions about their areas of interest. Using the data, they then can conduct more specific research via digital, in-person, and other research methodology. So I met with Mayor Bass and outlined my recommendation to conduct a proper citizen survey, hopefully this spring. I offered to do some background work on cost and methodology, and if approved, the final product would provide typical demographic data in addition to opinion data such as community quality and service ratings, economic and environmental sustainability, public safety, recreation, health, and wellness. We should ask general opinions about any simmering topics. We need to know residents' priorities and use that information to set goals and allocations for the coming decade. We need to show our residents or our shareholders that we value their opinions about life in New Milford. As an FYI, my professional background is marketing and market research. I've been the point person for proprietary research for the Asian Wall Street Journal and the International Herald Tribune. I've also been involved in focus group research, both behind the one-way glass as a client, and I also used to lead focus group discussions themselves across the country for Tempo, international ad agency in Manhattan. And I conducted product and market research for several of my own domestic and international clients, also in my old town, excuse me, in New Jersey, when I worked on a focus group project to increase funding for a high school rebuild project. I included a lot of additional information in my overview for you that you have as a handout. It's included in bold, boldface, right now, and I didn't want to take up my time here at the lecture because I probably exceed my two minutes, so I can go back and read it if you'd like, or you can read it in your own time. To prepare this overview for you, I contacted three firms. My first contact was with CRPP, which was a company that was hired to provide market research services for the last time that the plan of conservation and development took place in 2010. That firm split into two firms, both now called Great Blue, one in Connecticut and the other in New Hampshire. Great Blue specializes in telephone surveys and digital surveys, and their quote is to provide 400 completed telephone surveys in addition to 1,500 digital surveys. Although they do not recommend a mailed questionnaire over a telephone survey, something that I found odd because I disagree with that, I did request a mailed quote as well. Both quotes are not attached. I said they would be if I didn't have time to do that, so I can send them...
Diane, I'm sorry, you're at four minutes, Diane.
I'm at four? Wow, I'm really sorry. Okay. Let me move forward. So I will forward the two quotes to you. The other one is from a company in Colorado that administers the National Research... Sorry, it's called the National Research Center, and they administer the National Citizen Survey, which has been conducted more than 1,000 times in the past 25 years. It's difficult to tell whether it's better to survey by telephone, mail, in person, or online, since response rates change a lot, given changing times in technology. The most recent data I could find shows that response rates from mailed surveys are steady at 30 percent. This was from a May 2008 study. But phone survey response rates have declined from a Pew Research study in May of 2018 also, from 36 percent in the late 1990s to only 9 percent today. So the cost differential is extremely different, and you cannot ask as many questions in a telephone survey as you can in a mailed survey. So mailed surveys can be costly if they're custom-made, but this citizens survey that I mentioned...
Diane, would you wrap it up, please?
Yes, I'd be happy to. It can be highly customized, and you'll see that the quotes are very different. The...well, I'll go into that later. I do recommend either a combination of mailed and digital, or telephone and digital, and of the two, I prefer the mailed and digital. Both firms have about a six-week turnaround time, and I'm closing it. I'm happy to volunteer my time. In the meantime, I could work with town staff and the research firms if you decide to go forward, and I'd also be happy to contact more companies if you are interested. I wasn't sure about if you have to go out for a quote on this, but with a trademarked study, such as the one that I mentioned in Colorado, I really can't compare apples to apples. So you'll see that the quotes are extremely different, and I hope that you decide to do that.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Leah Gilz, please.
Good evening. My comments are as follows, and I would appreciate your consideration. I urge you to consider proposing that the DOT install a no-left-turn sign at the intersection of West Street and Bridge Street. It's a quick, simple, safe, and inexpensive remedy, and people coming down that way have alternatives, either on Nichols Place, or they can come down on the street above it with a light. And on another item, I've been following this recently, it was in the Spectrum. Please reconsider the appointment of Councilman Thomas Esposito to the Library Renovations Committee. Thomas Esposito's appointment to this committee renews his documented ethics violation and conflict of interest as noted in this chamber and in newspapers almost two years ago. The library plans had been approved. Then the library architect reported that Tom met him privately and pitched his firm's energy system. The obvious conflict is that Thomas Esposito is still employed by the same energy and solar firm. Now, Mr. Esposito, a Republican town councilman, as this is what, and we voted, has been nominated by our Republican mayor. Also, the New Milford Ethics Commission is chaired by Michael Barnes, who continues to serve as chairman of the New Milford Republican Town Committee. Given the obvious conflict of interest and the partisan Ethics Commission leadership, I request that Councilman Esposito not be named to the Library Renovations Committee, nor any current proposed New Milford Construction, Renovation, Installation, or Repair Project Committee. And finally, as regards the library, do not contract, please, for storage at a private, expensive facility, which would be...storage is required during the renovation, obviously. The Petty Bone Center is more than adequate, free, and convenient. A few minor repairs, shelving up in the library perhaps include electronic thermostats, are minimal expense for taxpayers, because the private storage is periodically expensive. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. Greg Mullin, please.
Hi, Greg Mullin, 39, Meadowwood Drive. I was just going to speak to items eight and 10, but I'll just follow up. I think Tom Esposito is an expert in the field and belongs on the committee so that he can make our funds go further and make sure that the library is using the best technology, obviously, as long as he's not bidding and any of his associated companies are not bidding. Two, JBS is not free by any means, so that's my opinion. All right, now, to items eight and 10. I'm very much against using landfill settlement fund. I don't quite understand why that language is in there at all, for security upgrades, for the parks are wrecked, for the land deming. I think that's an operational expense that should be budgeted for. It's a small enough item. And also, on putting sidewalks in along Route 7, probably let the Board of Finance define where that goes. Don't sug... I'm putting...the idea that somebody suggesting landfill settlement fund is ridiculous, in my opinion. It doesn't meet, as far as I can tell, the definition of the ordinance, construction and municipal public recreational facility, educational facility, or library facility, not sidewalks. I don't see where anybody's coming up with that idea. I think it also points to a need for this body and the Board of Finance to approve funding before any grant goes forward or gets approved. So you should know where the money's going to come from first, because now we're in for $400,000 that somehow, I think, wasn't planned for, and I think landfill settlement fund is a bit of a stretch. You know, in the same way that I thought using landfill settlement fund for elevator repair at the library was inappropriate also, which brings me to say my final point, is I think we should further define the landfill ordinance, landfill settlement fund ordinance, to remove any gray areas and not allow bad precedent to happen for future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Jeff McPry, please.
Jeff McPry, 288 Kent Road. I've got a couple of things here. I'll hand to the mayor after I'm done. I want to talk about Board of Education. I'm looking at line items. For Hill and Plain School, on page four, line item 56, 110, they want 166.67 percent increase. And last year, for these general supplies, they had zero increase. Okay? Now, also for Hill and Plain School, line item 51, 180, they're looking for an 886.39 percent increase. And last year, they asked for 2.15. That's just amazing for me, trying to comprehend, understand. Northville Elementary School, line of 57, 500, they're asking for 455.4 percent increase. Last year, they were minus 90 percent. Okay? There's something screwy going on there from my position, I believe. There can't be that big of a swing in one year. Also, at Northville Elementary School, line item 51, 180, they're looking for 886.39 percent increase, and last year, they were at 2.16. Astronomical increase, and that's for stipends, and that's for student activity. Sharonoble Intermediate School, line out in 51, 285, they're asking for 671.51 percent increase, and last year, they were minus 86.54. That's an astronomical swing, and that's for that. That's crazy. And Sharonoble Intermediate School under Special Education, they're in line item 53, 300, they're looking for a 300 percent increase, and last year, they had NA, non-applicable. Another astronomical increase for something that they have no justification for, from my perspective. Scaticoke Middle School, line out in 53, 300, asking for 234 percent increase. Last year, they were minus 50 percent. Also at Scaticoke, line out in 56, 500, they're asking for 359.8 percent increase, and last year, they were minus 54 percent. Sharonoble Intermediate School, line out in 52, 300, they're asking for 875 percent increase, and last year, they had zero in the budget for that. Okay? That's other professional printing office supplies. New Milford High School, line item 55, 101, for field trips, they're asking for 300 percent increase. Last year, they had zero. Also, New Milford High School, line item number 53, 300, they're asking for 428.57 percent increase, and last year, it was non-applicable. In music, in New Milford High School, line item 54, 310, they're asking for 200 percent increase. Last year, they were minus 60 percent. Okay? And the last thing, under operating expenses by major objective code, non-certified salary. They're asking for a 1,088.53 percent increase over last year, which was minus 82.01. Where do they justify stuff like this? Now, to me, it's absurd that they put these astronomical numbers out there, and the citizens are going to end up paying for it. Now, in the budget year to grant, in 1719 year, the total is 1,607,873. But in actuality, last year, the budget had 1,644,375. How can they put it on in the new budget and show it less than what it was last year? Okay? We've got some numbers here, and I'm asking you people, please, look at every one of these line items, and ask the Board of Education to justify them, okay? Because I'm a retired citizen making $1,623 a month. Now, my mortgage with my taxes and my homeowners insurance is 1,650. I'm out of money on the first day of every month, okay? And I have a debilitating disease, which is going to put me in a wheelchair, and my wife has leukemia, and we just can't keep up with the expense. Okay? So adding things like this each year needlessly, and raising my taxes, which I can't afford to pay, and I have to mess my numbers around with my budget every single day of the month just to break even, that's not right. That's not living. And I don't think the Department of Education has a justifiable... Thank you, sir. A justifiable budget presented even at 2.59 percent. If they can't present you a flat budget this year, then they're not doing their job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. That's the end of the list, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Walter. Next, I'd like to, yes, ma'am. Yep. Like to ask Mr. Capola to come up.
As we've been doing, honoring those citizens who've gone above and beyond for our town, and I'd like to highlight them. So I'd like to say a few words on your behalf, Mr. Capola. Whereas Robert W. Capola was born on September 16th, 1999. Thank you, Father Charles, to Alito, Massachusetts, to Anita and Ralph Capola. He's been married to Adrian for 43 years and has one daughter, Anne. And whereas Bob graduated from Alabotia High School, earned a BA in history from North Adams State College, now called Massachusetts College in Little Bowers, and is MS in special education LD gifted from Southern Connecticut University. And whereas Bob is a proud US Army veteran and recipient of the Bronze Star for his service in Vietnam, he is a member of the Veterans of Foreign Wars and the American Legion. And whereas Bob enriched the lives of many children during his four-week-plus years of teaching, he taught third through fifth grade in New Milford and Dover Plains, New York, set up gifted and talented programs in New York State and various school systems in Western Connecticut, and held a position as chairman of the Boys and Girls State Committee of the American Legion. And whereas Bob has been an active member on many town boards, commissions, and civic organizations, he served three terms on the town council, two terms on the Board of Education, served on the Commission of Aging, Housing Partnership, Historical Records Commission, New Milford Historical Society, Lions Club, Literacy Volunteers on the Green, and a member of the St. Francis Xavier Parish, and many, many more. And whereas Bob is a collector of presidential biographies, along with his wife and daughter, would entertain children as the Capola Clowns, making balloon animals for several events. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Bass, would hereby express the gratitude of the citizens of the town of New Milford to Robert W. Capola for his dedication and many contributions to our town.
And I have another suggestion, Ray. Thank you.
Yes, sir. For talking to Katie about initiating again the Lea Now and Da Vinci Award, we did it last year. It was stopped for a number of years. I don't know why. And Katie, I formed a committee. Would you like to do that?
Absolutely.
The hundreds of people in New Milford that volunteer in various capacities, many of you know, caused by looking at the charter revision, all the commissions and boards and the government side, but many of our volunteers, we don't know about at all. They do it very quietly and enhance our community. We're very fortunate. So I would like you to consider, when the flowers bloom, and the grass is green, and the trees are full with their foliage, to think of having a proclamation to honor New Milford volunteers generically, because I was thinking about it. You won't give me enough time to speak of all volunteers and organizations. I think we...I know that I'm a veteran, and we say thank you to our veterans today. I think New Milford, for that day, should thank anybody they know who's done something, and it doesn't have to be major. It could be a minor or some...so I appreciate that, recognizing, and I look at this award tonight as you recognizing volunteers in New Milford, and hundreds of people, hands are on this as you gave it to me. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, we're going to go to Mayor's comments. And first, I'd also like to talk about Mr. Tim Cornelius. May his memory be eternal also. He passed away. Mr. Cornelius was involved in New Milford youth basketball and many other organizations for our youth. He is survived by his wife Jane and son Tristan, and the town wishes them best wishes and condolences and prayers for his family. Next, we'd kind of like to talk a little bit about some of the things that we're doing here. Ones, we're continuing our road program. We have our consulting engineers out on numerous roads, looking to bring back their results so we can continue our process for our road program, which will be breaking ground late spring, early summer. It was mentioned today about the intersection on West Street and Grove Street. How that germinated was, for those that travel that road numerous times a day, or once a day, or once a week, the state of Connecticut was putting in the new traffic lights on Bridge Street and Railroad Street. When they did take that... When they did take that, upgraded those lights, they then took off the flashing light, which is at the intersection of West Street and Bridge Street. I did speak with the engineer that was inherited this project, and the G C, and also the state Connecticut DOT about how this happened. Because they were upgrading the lights, it then became non-compliant for a flashing light. So being there, we explained to the DOT that this could create several traffic problems for us. The most major one, obviously, is for those that take West Street, trying to get out of there, making a left-hand turn. Normally, when I had a flashing light, you took your life into your hands. Now, without that light, it is even more dangerous. One of the things we did suggest in the very beginning was to put what they call "do not block the box." So basically, it lets the drivers that are coming up from Bridge Street know that you cannot block the intersection. Blocking the intersection is a finable offense. Also, that gives the driver that would be making the left on West Street the opportunity to exit in a safer manner. There was a thought from the DOT, they were asking, similar to what was mentioned today, about making that a one-way or making it a non-left-hand turn. The one-way, I was telling DOT, was that would create a problem. We have numerous residents, they're in apartment buildings down there, we also have the sewer plant, has numerous septic trucks that go there, and then you have the bleater. So they understood that that really wasn't going to work. They brought, they're bringing their plans back to their engineering staff and their DOT. They promised they would take a look at that, but it's not going to be a quick fix. It's going to take some time. So we're going to try and at least get the marker for "do not block the intersection" and "do not block the box," and try and make our citizenry more aware of that area, and do the best we can while we're working with the Connecticut Department of Transportation. The next thing is, we all know we're expecting some snow starting tonight. Some forecasters say it's going to be around ten o'clock tomorrow, depends on who you talk to. One of the things that I heard from our residents, the last time we had a pretty good snow incident was the parking lot on Patriots Way. That due to the people parking there overnight, and then they would leave, they wouldn't give our DOT a chance enough to plow in those particular parking spots, which create a safety issue. So I met with our public works team, I met with our park and rec, Dan Calhoun, who's in the audience as well, and we were looking at ways to make it better, more efficient. So we came up with even and odd day parking overnight in Patriots Way. So the signage is up, so if you do happen to have to park over there overnight, on an even day, there's spots for you to park, on an odd day, there's spots to park. So what's going to happen is, on the even day, when you're parked there and you leave, the DPW team can then clean up that spot, and then if it's still a snow incident, they then move to the odd day on the other side where it's already been plowed. So that creates an efficient way of how we do it. Secondly, on the Bridge Street parking lot, or actually, the Railroad Street parking lot, so that's the one adjacent to the Railroad Street, Railroad Station, what we're also doing is, between eleven and twelve, if a snow emergency has been called, we're going to close down that parking lot so that the DPW team can plow that efficiently and safely, so that we can open first thing in the morning, as long as the snow emergency has been lifted. So I want to thank the DPW and our park and rec team for coming up and helping with this, to make this happen. The next, talking about in the next couple of weeks, through the town meeting that we had, that allowed us to buy a pothole machine, that's coming in the next couple of weeks. So once that comes online, we'll be able to efficiently have a one-man crew come out and start filling potholes with a machine. Fast, efficient, and that's what the town expects and demands, a good return on your investment. The next thing, we had a town meeting here last week, and thank you for the residents that came, about the hazardous signs that are on our bends and our curves in our rural areas. We heard from our citizenry that that's something that we really don't want to have. We had, thankfully, some of our members from the Connecticut Department of Transportation talk about how the grant became, how we got it, and are there solutions to making this happen. So we had very robust conversations with the DOT, with our DPW team, and the public. So we're looking at ways that we can minimize the signs on those roads in a safe manner. So I'll continue to update the council as we keep going through that process. We're also in the middle of budget preparation. The Board of Education, I went to their opening meeting and their meeting when they decided on their budget to send over to here. So how the process works is that now I will be presenting, next week, the budget, the Mayor's proposed budget, to the town council and the Board of Finance. Then budget deliberations happen. Then, after the deliberations, the town council decides to make their adjustments. It then goes to the Board of Finance, and the Board of Finance then can make adjustments if they so deem. It then goes out to the public, and you, the public, decide what the budget's going to look like. With charter revision, it's now changed where the budgets have been bifurcated. And what I mean by that is, in past years, if one of the two budgets failed, they both failed and both went back to the public. It's changed now, if there is one that fails, that one goes back for the Board of Finance to take a look at, and the other one stays. So that's a charter change. We'll continue to update you when it comes to the budget, but you're invited to all of our budget presentations. I'll be putting out the budget agenda to the town council and the Board of Finance, and we would love for you to come and speak your mind as well. This Saturday, nine-thirty to eleven, is Coffee with the Mayor. That's where you can come. It's a very informal setting. You can come, state your piece, talk whatever you would like to talk about. We'd love to hear from you. So please, if you can, come down, nine-thirty, Coffee with the Mayor on Saturday. On Thursday, February twenty-first, at seven PM, here in the E. Paul Martin Room, the Plan of Conservation Development Subcommittee and the Plan of Conservation and Development, that's kind of our guidebook for our town, will have their first community conversation. So that's where you, the public, can give your input. And their topics are community services, transportation facilities, and infrastructure. Also, with the gracious support of our citizenry, the library is moving forward. We've been having talks with our library building committee. They've been talking with the Connecticut Historic Preservation Trust about some of the finalizations, and what they want to see in the design, as they're giving us a million dollars to help with the building. And I will keep you updated as we continue to move forward. Also, I'd like to talk a little bit about, we are going to be applying for a community development block grant from the state of Connecticut. There will be no matching funds for this, but one of the great things about this is it gives the town an opportunity to provide some much-needed rehabilitation for our housing, for our citizenry. So one of the things that we're going to be looking to do is a rehabilitation loan program. So basically, what that loan rehabilitation program is designed for people with their eligibility. It has different kind of income limits on it, but it's going to allow you, if needed, to get a much-needed roof done, a boiler done, septic done. If you need it, we're here to try and help you as best we can, with low-interest or no-interest loan. And that's provided with a community block grant from the state of Connecticut. What happens is, is once you're approved for this, and the work is then done, your title, that's for those that own the home, that's what you have, would be encumbered, meaning it would be put on your title, and then once you either refinanced your property or sold your property, you then would be paying back the town of New Milford. And what's beneficial for this, for all of us, is if we can keep our neighborhoods safe, keep the neighborhood looking well, it keeps all of our property values higher. So it benefits everyone. Lastly, the New Milford Green Heat Percussion and Guard is having their home show this Saturday, starts at five PM for the percussion, and I wish them much success in their endeavors, and I'll be there, so I'm excited to hear their great show. So, thank you. Katie?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned budget. Do you have the dates of the hearings yet?
They'll be finalized, and I'll send them out tomorrow.
All right.
Yes, sir.
And do we have a copy of the audit yet?
I don't believe so, but I will double-check with Greg tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item number five, our consent agenda, motion to approve items five A through five E.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm sorry, I forgot, I have...
Mend the minutes?
Yeah, I forgot about the, I have to amend. Last meeting, January twenty-eighth, there were some corrections. There are two typographical corrections. Sorry, I didn't look at this before I put that on there. Does that, do we have to change anything? If you just...
So I think we have to...
Can't you just make that as...
Yeah, it's just the spelling of Jeff McBriarty's name and Brian Lastro was misspelled.
I mean, that can be done just as, the chair could just say, accept these as...
No one noticed it was actually...
Typographical correction.
The actual part that's missing, though, is the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement, which by law must be attached to the collective bargaining agreement.
This?
Yes. Can we make that a separate item?
Yep.
On today's agenda?
I guess, I guess so.
So can someone entertain making a motion to add this to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to move to add the motion, the correction to the minutes motion to the agenda, make it item, what am I going to make it? Item five, no, we already did that one. Item six?
Or you can make it five...
No, we already voted on that.
Okay. Make it six.
Yeah, I guess, item six. Which is going to mean everything's out of order here, but... And the motion is, this was from minutes, to ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the town and New Milford and the United Public Services Unit Forty-seven, the police, the New Milford Police Union, beginning retroactive July first, twenty eighteen, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. We did this in the last meeting, and the, I guess it wasn't the proper word, motion to ratify. So that's the motion.
Is it two motions? Is it the motion to add it, and then the motion to do that, or is it one motion?
So let's do the motion to add it.
Motion to add it as an item.
And we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And now we have the other motion from Katie to rat, put that word "ratify."
Right.
Walter, did you argue second?
Yes, I did.
Yes, he did.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're making V or removing everything up one?
No, we'll move everything, how's that? Okay, so item number seven, motion to approve the following appointments and reappointments. Library Board of Trustees, Corey Linder, from two-eleven nineteen to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Municipal Roads Committee, Robert O'Connor, two-eleven twenty nineteen to January thirty-first, twenty twenty. He's filling a vacancy, both of those. And Library Modernization and Construction Committee, Thomas Esposito, filling a vacancy again February eleventh, twenty nineteen, through, this is a temporary committee, so it is July ninth, twenty nineteen.
I just want to make a comment about...
Do we have, do we have a second? Before discussion?
I just want to discuss Tom Esposito for the Library Modernization and Construction Committee. I'm pretty sure he said that his company will not bid on that project, is that correct? So where is the conflict of interest that was mentioned? I don't see one.
I think the issue, it's not that his company bids on it, his company's more of a broker, more of a middleman. So as long as his company isn't involved with who's bidding and who wins the bid, then he's fine. But if his company ends up in the brokering part of that, then that could be an issue. So that's really what it comes down to. No, he's not bidding on it. His company doesn't do the bidding or the installation.
So we don't know if his company's involved? Is that, is that what you're hearing?
Walter, his company can't be involved.
Right.
Right, okay.
He just can't, by state statute, he can't be involved.
Correct.
I think Mr. Esposito made it clear when this all arose, that it's in the minutes and on video, that he has nothing to do with bidding for the process and everything else, whether we want Mr. Esposito to, at the next meeting, table it or not, or vote for it tonight, just to make that clarification again to everyone.
No, I don't have any problem with it, Doug. But what he said at the time is, we don't bid and we don't install. He cannot even broker, which is understandable, sure, it'd be conflict of interest. So that's, that's the issue that has to be observed, is all I'm saying.
I just, I think that, I mentioned the last meeting, that we have a lot of people with knowledge of projects going on around town that save us a lot of money, consultants, whatever, and if we don't start using that, projects are going to not be as efficient as possible, as we found out last week when, when Facilities was doing the oil tanks without checking with construction people about pricing those costs.
Right. I agree one hundred percent. I mean, Dr. Mulling had expertise in something, or Mr. Knowham, or Walter, or any of us had an expertise in anything, and we could add to the conversation and show our expertise toward a project. Certainly, you know, it would be beneficiary, so...
I think it's a big value add, if you have somebody that's, that's their profession and want to donate their time and talent to benefit the town. I think that's great.
Works for me.
Good. So do we have a motion?
We have a motion and a second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item number eight, motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussion of a donation of land to the town of New Milford. We invite the town attorney, Mr. Grimes, community investment officer, Cass Ignetta, into our executive session.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Real school.
I'm just trying to figure out how do you figure it out. Well, I'm not going to be able to. I mean, I'm in favor of that. I'm in favor of that. I would have to. Okay, the way we give them much more time to get through that. I actually have to. But if you're liberal, you can't turn that. That's why I'm asking. Why do you want? So we can manage it. So our folks are. They will make sure that this is on me. And. Where we go. Thank you. Can you keep your mouth? Thank you. Thank you. I don't want to feel almost as if we were leaving anything. So the property was wanted. It's a better way. It's a better way. I'm just trying to figure out. I would use either way. Well, I'm not going to be able to. I'm in favor of that. 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 I will make sure that this is on me. And. Everybody. Thank you. Can you keep your mouth? Thank you. 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 Okay, it says no one is comfortable. It says nothing. 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 You know, during the day, you know, it's kind of easy to. Um, during the day, I realize it's a bit. But I could have asked some questions. Uh, you know, what's the, what do you want to do here and what do you know about? Uh, when you do that, I should have asked some questions. Why did you say that? I'm glad it's. I'm glad you did some work. 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 But there's something that's not there. You're right. 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 So I know that I didn't want to be that because I said, obviously, not for other people. But we need to do this to us. But that we can keep, 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 you know, keep it in place. Because I would have said that. Right away, I understand. Okay, so let's be sure I know. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But there's no way for me to know what it is that's there. I mean, never done. We could have. 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 Thank you. 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 Okay. Um, during executive session, no motions were made and no votes were taken. Move to return to regular session.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item nine. Um, motion to upgrade the Lindemming Park security system in the amount of, uh, it's a motion to request up to, not, motion to request from the Board of Finance, a special appropriation, not to exceed seventy thousand five hundred dollars. And to recommend the appropriation be utilized from the landfill settlement fund, from the landfill settlement fund as construction of municipal public relations facilities. That's the motion.
Dan?
Good evening, everyone.
Just a second.
Second?
Second?
Okay, I just want to clarify something you said. Did you say from, this came from Board of Finance's recommendation?
No, it has to go in the board of finance.
A motion to request from the Board of Finance, a special appropriation not to exceed the seventy thousand five hundred.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dan Calhoun, Director of Parks and Recreation. Um, here this evening to request funding for security, security upgrades at Lindemming Park. Um, we're looking to put in entrance gates, um, two in gates and one exit gate. Um, we will be selling specialized stickers with RFID tags on them. So if you have a sticker, you go to the left gate and the gates will automatically open. Um, this RFID system will also have software that goes along with that. So we'll be able to track, um, people going in and out. Um, that was one issue we've been having is, uh, people leaving and coming back with other people. This will track the amount of times they're coming in and going out. Uh, this will also, um, have security cameras at the gates so we can pick up license plates and things like that. And we're also looking at security gates in certain areas of the park, um, security cameras throughout the park. Um, this will also include signage, um, some line painting to upgrade, um, how we're going to be doing this. Um, it will have a DVR recorder, something that I can either access at the, at the security shack or remotely at my office. Um, so that's what we're looking for. Um, if anybody has any questions?
Okay.
Um, Dan, thanks. Um, so is the seventy thousand five hundred, is that the cost of all the security equipment?
Security equipment and installation.
Okay, so you're, this is being outsourced?
Yes.
Okay, and was there pricing done with multiple people?
We've spoken with four companies. Um, two of them were not able to handle what we're looking for. Another company came in almost double this.
Okay, okay, just cause, um, and my next question is, so I appreciate the camera idea. Uh, the DVR or where the camera information is stored is going to be in the, uh, shack where you drive in?
Correct.
And, um, how will that be secured?
There will be a computer system in there that, this, this building is secure. There's twenty-four hour, uh, day security during the season. Um, so there will be a computer in there with access with a password, of course.
You mean there's a human there?
There's a human there twenty-four hours a day from Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Okay, so that's the gate part. And then where we talked last year about people walking in over on the utility company property?
Yeah.
Was something done there to?
No, we were unable to do anything with there. Um, we looked at fencing and that type of thing. Um, I think more that people were sneaking in past the guards and that type of thing on busy days. Um, I think a big part of that was people shuttling people in.
So when I drive in, instead of my sticker, there'll be an R, it'll be an, an RFID and the gate will automatically open?
Yes.
So do we not now need anybody in the guardhouse?
No, we still need someone there to sell, I know. We still need someone there to sell stickers and monitor everything.
Okay, and you're going to be able to take pictures of license plates? When you have a sign somewhere letting people know that you are under?
Yeah, we'll have surveillance signs and also directional signs that tell people where, which lane to be in.
But I, a town attorney could say something about this, but I believe there has to be some sort of sign to let people know that they're, uh, being photographed. Is that not so?
That's right.
So just to make sure.
Okay.
Thanks.
Walter?
The question was asked during public comment. Should this come out of operational expenses that? We spent a lot of money to revitalize this.
Yeah, Walter, I thought about that. Uh, and I remember, uh, Dan and those guys coming to the town council for the actual upgrade of Lindemming. And I believe, Dan, it's over a million dollars, correct?
Yeah, it was big, big money. It was big money.
And I believe in the beginning of your thought process of the upgrade to Lindemming was adding in some security components, correct?
At one point, we talked about cameras and Wi-Fi and that type of thing.
So my thought, Walter, was instead of impacting the taxpayer, that we'd use the landfill settlement fund because it is our shining star of recreation in the summertime? And use what should have been in the initial, um, cost to upgrade this park, add into it. And since we use it the first time, just finish it off and do it the right way.
Well, that probably would have been my follow-up. Why wasn't this originally part of the package? Because we did spend big money.
We need to protect that investment.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
You know, obviously, I have a, a little meat in the, in the bone on this because I'm part of Park and Rec. And, uh, we all know what happened over the summer with the influx and, uh, the park has grown, the town's grown. And so with, uh, with that, you need security and safety. And this ensures both. It helps protect the people that, uh, from the town that are there. It helps protect the park after hours. There's more accountability. And also, uh, we think that it would help, uh, also the income because you would find people that are coming back and forth with the cars. So to me, this is a no-brainer. This is the reason why we have this fund, um, to offset the cost. Obviously, with the new stickers and the gate and stuff, the initial cost, but, uh, you know, throughout the future maintenance and stuff will be, uh, a cost of the Park and Rec. But, uh, I think it's a no-brainer and it's, it's, uh, well overdue and we need it. So I'm in favor of taking it from the landfill.
Mike?
Yeah, I, I think that the security is definitely needed and as you said, we just spent a lot of money and, and we need to keep that, um, secure. I do feel, as was mentioned in public comments, because we, you know, the next-gen item is spending more money, um, on the next, two-gen items later. Spending more money in the, uh, Waste Management Fund. And, you know, regardless of what we do today, I do agree that we need to look at the parameters of the Waste Management money and make it a little bit less ambiguous and make it a lot, lot cleaner saying, we're going to use it. This is what it's for. This is not, I mean, this one, you, you can stretch because recreation, it's.
Well, this one's pretty clear with the language of what it's needed for.
Yeah, but then I look at the other one, Public Works, and you know, yes, our sidewalks for being outside recreation, yes, but it's really stretching it. And then, and so I, I think that regardless of what we do tonight, that's got to get on the agenda. It's like really tightening up that.
I thousand percent agree. We need to look at the ordinance and see if what the council's, uh, pleasure is on, uh, defining it more, which the council has the ability to. Uh, as for what you had asked before, uh, prior, uh, a prior couple meetings before, if we're doing anything when it comes to expenditures, ask our, which is in your packets, ask our finance director, do we have the ability to do this? So in your package, you'll see from, uh, our finance director, as of December thirtieth, the Waste Management Fund balance is currently thirteen million, two hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars. So we do have the ability to fund this project.
Yeah, it was not my question.
No, just.
To fund.
Yep.
My, my, more my question is.
And I do agree with you, Mike. We will put that on the agenda as how we process, looking at.
Might wait till after budget.
Yep.
Crazy soon.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, we, we did allocate some money to start making some money out of this, correct?
Correct.
And as opposed to a point oh five percent in the savings account we?
We can ask Greg when he comes, uh, next time, what, what that is.
Because that should have been done in the inception of when we had this landfill. Um, it should have been allocated. And this thing could have been doubled by the time it was finished and we would have double the money by the time the original amount was, uh, given out. Unfortunately, that didn't happen, but hopefully in the future, we can do a little bit more, uh, investigating and investments in it, so.
Do I assume that in order to get this done for the summer, you can't wait till the budget process?
Correct.
Correct, yeah. It's a huge time constraint.
No. Dr. Moore?
Hey, Doug. Uh, I'm sure the Park and Rec Commission discussed this issue.
Absolutely.
Were they unanimous in approving this?
Yeah, you know, and again, I'll go back to the summer, um, you know, the mayor had to go down there. I think it was the fourth of July, Pete, was it? And then, um, you know, we're in a different scope of, uh, you know, the, not only you have the influx of a lot of people coming up into the town, but the security and stuff is, wasn't, I won't say lax, but it wasn't up to date. And, and they've realized it and, uh, it's a burden on them. And so, uh, you know, we were unanimous on it. We were just thinking about, okay, you know, where are we going to get this one? Because we're already, you know, uh, tight on the budget and a bunch of us, including myself, said, listen, go to the council, talk to, about getting the landfill and, uh, you know, was take it from there. So, um, yeah, there was discussions. I actually have, uh, cameras and I know how the cameras work and it's, it's great. You can use replay, you can steal photos. It's a thirty-day turnover on the DVR. So it, it's a great, uh, asset to have and they can get it from either their phone where they are or in the office, whatever, to check up on things. And sometimes security camera makes people be, uh, a little less intrusive, so.
Are there going to be security cameras on the docks and boats?
There's going to be, that's the plan. We have, um, two on that gate and then there's going to be four within the park. Um, and we can always add more down the road if we ever want to, but right now, there's going to be one near the bath house, near the swim area, near the boat slips and near the maintenance area.
It's, um, you mentioned, I know it's not part of this, but the, you're going to try and fence off that area. What was the problem trying to get that done, that area from the side?
It would, it's very costly. I mean, plus, they can't get, couldn't guarantee me a price because it would depend on what they ran up, ran into out in the woods. I mean, you know, ledge and everything else, um, and that, we're talking hundreds, hundreds of feet of fencing to cover that property line.
And Mike, some of the thought processes put cameras facing there? And also, one of the additions that we did do was put in the park ranger. So he's got the gator. So he was able to catch people that were going through back there anyway. He was able to apprehend them, so.
Okay.
And Dan, just to be clear, the, uh, when you got the pricing, this is for night vision as well, correct?
I believe.
Infrared, yeah. That's why it's a little bit more costly. You get the red, uh, infrareds that go around the camera. So it's almost like daylight even at night. So you can see license plates, people and so forth.
Dr. Moore?
Uh, how much vandalism was at the park last year?
During the season, not, it's not crazy vandalism. It's just more litter and garbage that people leave when they leave for the day. Uh, it's not so much damage that they cause. Um, more of the damage caused is caused in the off-season, um, but that's been minimal.
Are we going to have the cameras going in the off-season?
We can, yeah. They're, uh, they're motion detection, so.
I'm not a big fan of this. I got to tell you, I'm not a big fan of cameras like this. And that's crazy coming from someone who was on Park and Rec for twelve years, okay? Um, where, where do we draw the line? We see someone littering, it's a violation, are we going to do anything about it? We see someone down there having a beer at the end of work, are we going to do something about it?
Right.
Where, where do we draw the line on this stuff?
I think definitely.
Let me just.
Certainly.
Okay. Um, as, as crazy it sounds, vandalism used to be a lot worse down there than it is now. Uh, I remember years when things were really destroyed down there. Um, uh, the lifeguards are much better trained than they used to be. They keep an eye on stuff much better than they used to. Um, and they've, you've done a great job with that stuff. Um, I just think this is a bit of overkill, but that's my point. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
When we were putting cameras in the health club, I've been talking to Jim Corbett, who was here last week. And he told me about his, a store where someone was suing them for slipping in something that was spilled in the store. And he found, they found, they went through the security camera and saw a person pour something on the floor, lie down, something like that. So security cameras aren't just for catching people, but there's a lot of things that can go wrong at that, at that beach. And it connects, actually, a big protection for the town to have those cameras to show that we weren't liable. Because there's water in the summer, there's time, someone, someone could get hurt very badly and it, it can show that, you know, we weren't liable when they go to sue us, so.
Oh, I agree with that. There, there is potential.
And you also have damage on boats where I've known a couple of people that had damage on boats and, uh, and they've had a incurred price. And, and, and just to elaborate a little bit more, the whole amount just isn't for cameras, it's for the gates as well.
I wish I absolutely hate.
Well.
I totally hate the idea.
I'd like it to be nineteen seventy again where everybody would just walk in and pay and be everything. We live in a new world to wear.
Oh, no, no, no. I used to work at Lindemming Park. No, people snuck in thirty and forty years ago.
Yeah, I snuck in.
That's nothing, yeah, no, that's nothing new. It's not like people today are any different than the people who were forty years ago. They snuck in then. They, they had cars coming in and out with multiple people. No, that, that's not new.
I understand what you're saying.
So.
The non-residents is a little bit more than that in there because.
It's, it's not new.
No, because, because, uh, other towns.
I worked there, it's not new.
No, no, I'm just saying, since other areas like, um, Squants Ponds are putting more restrictions, people from out of town are trying to come to our parks. And, and so that, that is new. I agree with you sneaking in because I did when I was a kid. Not a lot of young guys. That's the drift of time.
And now happen for the next twenty years and we just live in a different time. What, maybe in nineteen seventy, how many people were in the, you know, eight thousand?
So just kind of, as a sidebar too, talking to other first selectmen, uh, in the area, they had, uh, issues with their summer as well. This is a million-dollar investment plus the town put into this park. Uh, you have residents that pay a fee to use it. And I think it's only fair that we make sure that the people that do use it pay their fair share and do the right thing and keep it safe and secure for our residents. That's why I asked for this. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
All of us in favor.
Abstained. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did I see the note?
Probably not.
The note, that's where I put that. Would you read it?
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
So go ahead and read it.
Um, the, uh, Charter, Section eight oh six A, uh, Board of Finance, uh, Special Appropriation Supplement to the Budget. Uh, by resolution and only upon recommendation of majority of the entire town council to make appropriations supplemental to those provided in the annual budget. Give me that last sentence.
So what does that mean?
Upon recommend, it means that in order for a special appropriation request to him, the Board of Finance, it needs to be approved by five town council members.
We don't have, we don't have a majority.
No, it has to be by all that are here. Means all five had.
Says a majority of the entire town council.
Oh, you said the majority of those here this evening. That's what you wrote here.
I probably said unanimous of those here this evening.
Uh, your words are, hence, the motion requires unanimous vote of those here tonight.
Yes.
Unanimous.
That was not unanimous.
Oh, five of us, not the whole council membership.
Yeah, it's five regardless.
Five.
You need five tonight.
You need, you need five.
Five here tonight.
Yeah, unanimous five, yes, regardless, yes.
So we had an abstention, does that impact?
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Grimes, you can answer this. Uh, if a person abstains from a vote before the meeting is over, can they, uh, go back to that vote?
We can change the vote.
Yeah. Before we go on to next item?
Yes, sir.
Boy, you're on the hot seat.
You know what the issue is? They won't get it done in time if we wait a couple more weeks.
Absolutely.
It's going to be, it's going to be pressure for them to get it done.
They're laughing.
And then they don't have the enough time to get it done. Then it won't get done right and it won't be ready for the beginning of the summer, so.
You talking to you or you talking to us?
I still don't like it. I still don't like it. I don't like the gays. I don't like cameras all over the place. Uh, I think we're, we're trying to solve a problem that really doesn't at this time exist. But, you know, there's potential for it, I get that. But, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to change my vote to approve.
Thank you, Dr. Moore.
On the previous item.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So the motion passes.
Done.
Okay.
Next, Mayor, updates on oil tank replacement and roof projects. And I just wanted to, we had a, um, lengthy discussion at our last town council meeting concerning our, uh, oil tank replacements, especially the one on East Street School. Um, I met today, uh, Councilwoman Frances as well. Uh, we met with the, um, superintendent, Dr. Tracy. Uh, met with their, um, Anthony, their finance director, um, Wendy Fallenback from the Board of Ed. Um, we had Greg Osipoff, uh, here as well, Councilman Samansky, um, as well. And we talked about moving forward, what do we do? How do we ensure that our projects are done in the most, uh, efficient and, uh, effective way moving forward? Uh, so we all agreed to a couple of things, especially when we're going now on to the roof projects, is that these are going to be done, uh, on the town side. And the town will basically be setting up a, um, building committee that will be looking at these infrastructure improvements. Uh, they're gonna be made up of citizenry with building and construction experience, so that we can get a second set of eyes on there. And we both agreed to that moving forward. And I wanted to thank the Board of Education for coming in and talking with us about how we can move forward jointly in the most efficient way. Uh, we're gonna be meeting again in two weeks and kind of going over the full scope of the East Street project. Cause they're kind of gonna be budding, budding it up now, buttoning it up now. And we're gonna kind of look at that practice and how we can make it better and more efficient for our taxpayer. So, I just wanted to update, uh, the Town Council that we're continuing to move forward. Uh, and, but that's how we're gonna do it through organizational.
So, is East Street going forward, or?
So, East Street, right now, they're, they're completing the work because it was just basically a hole there.
Hole in the ground.
So, they're completing the work. We're asking the contractor to come, uh, come before us. We have some questions that we'd like to ask and kind of go over the mythology of how they did it, kind of look at those practices. Uh, then we're gonna look at the next tank, which is gonna be the Saranoke School. So, we wanna make sure that we implement it properly, so we don't have, uh.
I guess my question is, the extra money that they were asked for at the last meeting, are they getting to that?
So, right now, we don't have a firm number as to how all that works yet. And we'll be bringing that back to the Council once we firm up all those numbers.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay, item number 11.
Sounds like the right correction.
Is there a separate thing about the roof?
Nope, roofs were the same. Uh, right now, uh, we're looking to get a, uh, a pricing on the Saranoke School, because that seems to be the most important one right now. It's more of the flat roof.
And Saranoke is the biggest one?
Correct.
Not Northville?
Nope. Saranoke is the first one. And then, kind of in the same year we're looking at, which is this coming year, will be the completion of the high school. So, they've got a couple of, uh, quotes on, uh, one being the, um, the steel tin. And then the other is a steel tin with the ability to put solar. And then we're getting one which is asphalt to shingle to shingle. And taking a look at all those quotes that we'll be presenting to the Council.
There wasn't a problem with the Northville roof?
Northville, oh, go ahead, Katie.
No, we did talk about it, but they can fix what the problem is.
It's a masonry thing?
It's a masonry, uh, fix. They're doing it.
And that's, uh, we're looking at that to be, as we're looking to plan for the roofs, they were saying that's gonna be a couple of years out. Uh, the same with, uh, Northville.
That was their.
It was their plan.
Their plan and priority there.
Okay.
I did ask about the fix. Okay.
Yep.
Item 11, and now it was 10. So, motion to request from the Board of Finance a special appropriation not to exceed $400,000 for the purpose of funding the town in Millford's local match of 20% towards Route 7 pedestrian safety improvement project, and to recommend the appropriation be utilized from the landfill settlement fund as construction of municipal public recreation facilities.
Okay.
You have a second?
Second. Sorry.
Okay. So, uh, just real quickly, I know Mike is here. I just wanted to kind of give the Council an overview. So, this particular grant, which I believe is two grants in one, Mike, or is it two separate ones?
Two separate grants. One is a TAP, T-A-P, Transportation Alternate Something Plans.
And the other one is, uh.
Program, excuse me.
Right.
And the other one's called a Community Connectivity Grant, which is, there's no match to that one.
Right. So, we'll start with a Community Connectivity Grant. And that one, as you'll see in your package, that's the one that's by the John Pettibone School, right, Mike?
Correct. Dedicated to that property only.
And that sidewalk has no match to it?
No, that is a pure grant, um, for exactly what that program says, which is connectivity of communities. And, um, obviously, that is a community center. We had a zoning, uh, requirement. And I think when that building got approved for occupancy, um, to, I believe, within five years, uh, you know, produce a sidewalk program or a sidewalk plan around that property. Uh, we had the design, or at least the layout of the sidewalks done at the time, um, but no money to construct them. So, this goes a long way to getting that program done.
And both of these grants were applied for by the previous administration?
Correct.
And the second one is the, that's the.
That's the TAP.
That's the TAP grant.
T-A-P, yep.
And that particular grant, when you take a look at the, uh, the pictures that are in your packages, that is, uh, Mike, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but that's sidewalks from, is it the, is it the condos by the high school?
Yeah, uh, so, Candle Lake Road South, yes, the condos, correct?
All the way through the high school, all the way up to the, uh, Savings Bank of Danbury?
Correct, yes.
And then the next piece is, there's a piece missing of sidewalk where Litchfield Crossing, um.
Yep.
Development is, where the Taco Bell is, there's a gap there. So, that would then fix that piece, correct?
Correct.
And then the third piece would be, um, the sidewalks from Canterbury School down into the downtown.
Yes.
And with that, uh, because it's federal dollars, there's a matching grant that has to be, that the town has, has to match a certain component. I believe that's 20%, right?
Yes, it is.
So, the full scope of the project's two point?
So, uh, 1,887,205 was the anticipated cost estimate. Of that, 377,441 is our anticipated share, I believe, uh, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the motion asked for up to 400,000.
Right, not, not to exceed.
Requesting that number exactly, but up to, we believe that that would be sufficient, so.
Not to exceed.
And, uh, just kind of continuing housekeeping. So, it was mentioned, uh, in here that, that, uh, funding would be thought coming from the landfill settlement fund? So, to the Town Attorney, does that meet the standard that we can, uh, access the landfill settlement fund?
Well, I did, uh, do some research, and the, uh, the landfill settlement fund and the statutes that are created do not define the word facility. And of course, state Connecticut, when a term is not defined legislatively, as probably should be done maybe in a future updated disorder, you use the plain meaning. And the plain meaning of facility, according to legal dictionary, is a place, amenity, or piece of equipment provided for a particular purpose. So, the sidewalk clearly gets through the facility window in terms of the plain meaning definition. Katie?
Is that for both sides of the road, Mike?
No, ma'am. It is, uh.
Up by the high school?
The high school would be solely on the high school side, all the way up to Sullivan Road.
Okay.
And then, I think, as the mayor mentioned, filling in gaps, the specific one that we could all think of is the Taco Bell version. There may be some other opportunities.
We go from the condos, past the high school, down, past the Cumberland Farms, and down to where the banks are, the bank is at the four corners, right?
Correct.
So, then we just keep on going. We don't put the sidewalk there. We go down to where there's a gap.
Yes.
Taco Bell is.
Yes.
And then Canterbury, one side?
Yes.
Two sides.
Yeah, we, uh, so, correct. And we also applied for the other, the portion of sidewalk along Route 7 in front of Pettibone School, so.
Well, that I saw, but that's a different part of it, right?
So, the connectivity grant, that's why they're kind of tied together. We're gonna do as much construction with the connectivity grant as we can, and do any remaining portions only along Route 7 if we need to. So, i.e., we'll start on the Pickett District Road portion of Pettibone for the connectivity grant. Go as far as we can, uh, into or along Route 7, uh, that we can get with our 210,000. And then any remaining portions get, can get covered under this, uh, TAP grant.
But it's gonna go to the hard bus stop, right?
Yes, and we're actually adding a hard bus stop at that location.
Yeah, that's what's gonna, but then the other, so theoretically, there's no match on what gets done there, but the rest there is. But then, from Canterbury, is it both sides or just one side?
Is, same thing, one side on the, would be the west side of the road. Uh, extending the sidewalk from, uh, give or take, I think, the church, um, there, all the way up on the, uh, the west side of the road to join in with Canterbury sidewalk that's currently there.
Okay.
Which they are actually, in the process, they have a plan to reconstruct that as well.
Mike, logistically, uh, obviously, Route 7 is a state road.
Yes.
So, crosswalks, that kind of thing. So, if you start putting in sidewalks, not only in front of public buildings, but sort of private facilities and stuff. What are the logistics of, uh, first of all, we're gonna have to maintain them, correct? Are we gonna own these sidewalks?
The, uh, by our ordinance, they're owned and maintained, they're on public property, and that's what we're proposing. Um, they, by ordinance, are required to be maintained by the adjoining property owner. I.e., the high school is maintained by the town in Millford or the, or the high school itself. Um, any other properties that are there would be maintained, shoveled, repaired by the adjoining property owner.
Like Cumberland Farms, they have to powder their snow, they're shovel.
What about telephone poles and stuff being moved and everything else? Has that been all?
It's all part of our coordination project. We have a, you know, consultant engineer that we'll be selecting through a competitively, you know, qualified bid process, basically. Um, and, you know, in that selection, but part of that coordination work is all of that work is done, uh, at that point in time. Certainly, we're gonna be doing that. We're gonna be addressing, um, handicap accessibility, I'll say, uh, pedestrian safety issues, push buttons, et cetera, on all of, or any of the existing crosswalks that are there. And, or add some if need be. I don't believe we have any, um, specific intent to add crosswalks right now, but, uh, any of them that are there, we may have to, I believe we may have to add one at Larson Road and, uh, Route 7 as well, so.
Katie?
Um, two questions, Mike. So, if we were to say we didn't want to do the $400,000 match, we wouldn't get any of the money, is that correct?
Correct. I believe we would, yeah, give up the, this is a, so this is a grant that was applied for through Lots of, um, uh, I'm sorry, through WestCOG, Lots of, this is a different program they run. Through WestCOG, they had to be vetted by them first, and then the state is the final, um, you know, does the final sign-off on the, on the, the monies themselves. But, um, you know, the WestCOG is supportive of this project. Um, if, I believe if we don't match it, or we, we determine that we don't want to match it, um, they would unencumber the funds so that they could be encumbered on a different project.
So, if we couldn't afford to, that would be the end of that.
Correct.
And then my next question is, so this, all this new sidewalking, um, then who's shoveling the snow and maintaining it during the winter and fixing it when it cracks?
The, the adjoining property owners. By, by our, you know, the order.
The part that goes in front of, so from the condos to you get to the property that the high school's on.
Yes.
That's somebody else.
Correct.
In front of the high school to the edge of that property, that's us. The rest belongs to everyone else.
Yep.
And they're all aware that these sidewalks are being put in, or?
We're gonna be, we're gonna be going through a public informational process, and we'll make them wholly aware of that.
And what happens if they say they don't want to do it?
Um, it's, you know, our sales pitch, Katie, is frankly, it's a community investment that, you know, we need to make for alternate transportation solutions. Um, ultimately, it helps business, um, run better. And there's been study after study, I know, you know, um, I understand it doesn't make it easier necessarily for people. But as a community, I think we owe it to our citizens to look at our safety of, particularly in the high school area. One of the reasons we picked that location and the Pettibone Center, um, you know, for obvious reasons of, uh, community interest. Like you talked about, a hard bus stop there.
Right.
It's an area that, you know, we see a lot of walkers in, you know, we see them all the time in front of Pettibone. We see them certainly all up and down, uh, the Route 7 quarter, um, in the Coles area. And we, we see quite a, quite a few of them by the high school as well. Um, so it's important to provide solutions or alternatives, um, you know, for the public. And I think it's a community engagement. I believe our P O C D has advocated that we.
But if they don't, the only reason I'm asking, Mike, is that if they didn't do it.
Push for these kinds of solutions, so.
Right.
Yep.
But if Cumberland, let's just, they wouldn't, I don't think. Just to say Cumberland Farms doesn't really have the manpower nor care to hire anybody to shovel it, does that fall on us?
By ordinance, it does. If, if we are finding people that are not clearing or maintaining their sidewalks properly.
That's what I was getting at, okay.
We can send them a letter. Uh, we can find them, I believe it's $5 a day. Uh, we can go, you know, we can actually, by, by ordinance, the Highway Department, um, can go, you know, once we notify them, we can go then shovel their, uh, their side, clear their sidewalks, let's call it that.
Five dollars a day?
Treat them, correct? I believe that's what the ordinance says right now, yes.
Okay. Now, I just, I just want to know who would be, you know, who'd be responsible if they don't, so. Thank you.
Um.
Mike?
Yeah, I think that the point you're saying that it's definitely something, we have to convince them that it's in their best interest to have these. And I know the ones around the high school, especially when you get south of the high school, appreciate it. Because right now, kids cross through the industrial condos and, um, apartments there to get going south. Now, they actually don't have to cut there. There's a safe way to actually go south. So, they'll appreciate keeping the kids. I know, I know for a fact, our track team runs through that, that place daily. Now, we have a place to run safe, or run around it as opposed to going through it. And that'll, they'll appreciate that because they don't have, they don't have us going through the property, which is a liability for them. So, I, I, I think that it's not gonna be a hard sell that they'll, they'll be for. Especially the businesses, they'll get more walking traffic.
I think when we explain it to them, I, I believe most of them, you know, certainly come around. I, I, I think, you know, it's never an easy sell when you talk about, you know, requiring somebody to do other things. But I think they'll understand the community, um, benefits overall. And, uh, that's certainly part of the informational message that we're gonna be sending them, I think, throughout the process, so.
Tom?
You know, there's no doubt that the appearance and stuff, I, I just think that at this point, it's, it's too much at this time. I think this project would be huge. The numbers, whether they stayed the numbers or not, we're talking about $400,000 of landfill. We've got multiple projects going on in the next couple of years between the library and stuff like that. And I'm not clear about the wording that Matt had said about how we use this money. To me, it doesn't, in my mind, it doesn't fit under the guidelines of what I read. This money should go towards sidewalks. Maybe other council members may differ, maybe we need to clarify it. But to me, I don't think this, in my opinion, comes under the guidelines of spending $400,000 of land, in landfill.
Mike?
How, um, how soon do we have to make a decision that we're taking this money before the town, the state takes it back?
The, uh, well, I, I, I do not have an answer for you, Mike, on exactly how quick we have to make it. I would suggest if we, if landfill settlement is not the proper place to take it, then, you know, either we need to identify another source for you. Um, and that, you know, my understanding is this was identified by the Director of Finance, obviously, you know, vetted through the mayor and Matt. Um, yes, so whether or not it's appropriate, um, you know, for that. If, you know, we would either need another source of funding, or we would, I think, let WestCOG know that we, you know, aren't gonna perform the project and that they've awarded to another municipality.
Is June, or July 1st too late, is I guess my question, to where we budget the towns to vote on?
I, I certainly can get you an answer on that tomorrow. I don't, uh, I, I don't know the answer to that question as to how soon we need to do our appropriation. We've, we've moved forward. We have actually bid in RFQ. Um, and we've been kind of moving the, the preliminary parts of the project forward. But we haven't signed any contracts. We haven't awarded any, uh, you know, any work as of right now. But, uh, we have tried to kind of advance the project, been working with our liaison. There's a consultant engineer that's hired by the state to administer these projects. So, we've been working with them on the, you know, finalizing the process as we go forward. But this is obviously an important component because, um, we do have a committee, uh, that sourced these consultant engineers. Um, and we have a recommendation for, you know, the purchasing authority, but we can't make that recommendation and have them authorize it until we have, um, a known, you know, match, if you want to say, or known project, uh, funding source.
Katie?
So, um, this, this was done, uh, started back in 2017?
Correct.
The, the whole process, okay. And nowhere along the line, I mean, this isn't, yeah, here's something from July, something from May. So, anyway, knowing this was a matching grant, I just don't know, back in 2017, realizing, you weren't here, but how, what was the idea of how this was gonna be matched? How were we planning to pay for it? Nobody, was this the intent, do you think? Does anybody know? I don't remember.
I don't know.
I don't know if it's brought up.
It was actually a different office that really applied. I mean, we worked with, um, I think, a town planner at the time, uh, who had, uh, you know, fostered the grant, certainly as, you know, grant we, I think we support in total, uh, you know, for the alternatives it provides. But I was not privileged to, you know, the sourcing of the funding, uh, nor the, you know, how it was, you know, what the plan was to match the funding.
No, I, I, I think we all support having reasonable walkways for people to use. It's just a matter of the $400,000, a little steep. Um, and you can't have part of it, that's why I asked you that before. It's all or nothing.
No, we can't have Pettibone, that's.
I don't know, it's, is that true?
The Community Connectivity Grant is completely separate from this. So, whether or not this moves forward, the Community Connectivity portion is already.
And that's not a matching grant?
That's not a matching grant, correct. It's nothing to do with your, uh, you know, motion that's on the table, uh, tonight, no.
But they are together in this motion?
Well, because it's one big project, it's just how it's funded.
Walter?
Mike, what's the time limit on this? Do we, uh, when does this have to be done, the matching funds?
Uh, Walter, I, unfortunately, I don't know the answer to your question tonight, but I certainly can find out and get you an answer as to. but I certainly can find out and get you an answer as to, you know, when we have to make a commitment to the, uh, um, I'll say the state of Connecticut, basically, who's the one that brought us the letter, so.
You know, hindsight is magical. This probably should have been done a long time, a long time ago at a whole lot cheaper cost than it is right now. You know, I watch these kids and I watch adults walking Route 7, and I'm going, wow. There are no sidewalks. When we, when we did the road there, when the state did the road, we should have done sidewalks.
I was a big proponent for it then. I'm, I'm still a big proponent for it, uh, for the same reasons. But I couldn't agree with you more. It should have been done, uh, as part of the original project.
Absolutely.
Um, that's hearsay at this point, so.
Okay, thanks.
Unfortunately, but.
Thanks.
I think part of it back then was they didn't, they were taking so much land from the landowners, they didn't want to take more. I just remember that being an issue, but I agree, it's silly to do it without sidewalk.
And, and another thing, every time a grant comes up, doesn't mean we have to accept the grant and then add money to it just because we're getting a grant. True, true. But it sounds nice when someone's giving you something, but you have to spend more money to have the grant.
It gets more expensive then, and had to be done.
We're up to almost half a million dollars out of the waste management between the two items.
I agree, that's a big chunk of money.
You are getting a substantial share of sidewalks. I think it's somewhere in the vicinity of 7,500 feet of sidewalk completed with that.
It is, yeah.
Along, really, what, two major corridors linking, you know, several schools and, um, you know...
Is the, is the south from the school towards the condos, is that a much-used path for students?
Kevin, who's there all the time, had, uh, who was part of our committee, um, had said, you know, he doesn't see a day go by that he doesn't see people walking out in front of that school.
Oh, yeah.
Coming, going yards or whatever.
Both directions, yep. Certainly, we know, we know a lot of people walk to the Cumberland Farms, Pronto pizzas, and Bravo pizza, and further north.
Dunkin' Donuts.
Obviously, there's a couple of things. Dunkin' Donuts is there, so, I mean, you can get to Cumberland Farms. Technically, there's no sidewalk north right now of Cumberland Farms, so. Pass on, on, on grass areas.
As a track coach, I know for a fact, there's two locations that we use for training. One is Aldrich Hill, because it's the only real safe hill around for us to do Hill V. Pita. And the other is, and bless them, they, we have used the whole flea market. They have the insurance for the town. And to get to those two places is taking your life in hands. And you have, you know, you have 30 or 40 kids jogging that way around.
So you bring up a good point, and I think to answer your, your question, Katie, we've seen a big influx on Sundays. As you know, that flea market is, uh, particularly popular. And, you know, we have seen overflow parking be at the high school and people walking along Route 7, particularly on Sunday mornings. I, I can't say, I'm not saying they don't walk there other times, but, you know, that flea market has attracted, uh, you know, wealth of people and, you know, we know the popularity of it. And it's, uh, certainly been something we've seen over the past couple of years, uh, increase from, uh, you know, people, like I said, the overflow parking at, at the high school, walking down there.
Go ahead, Walter.
Walter?
Well, there's only five of us out of nine here. Should we wait until we have a full board?
And we'll get his answers about how long.
I just have a question, though. So what, if this were, if we were to say okay to this, say, wait for summer, when do you think it would be completed, the Route 7 part, let's just, or the, you know, I'm not worried so much about Canterbury by this minute, but...
Next spring.
So spring of 2020?
Most likely, I'm gonna, that, that would, that's the logical timeframe at this point. I mean, we certainly have some hurdles to jump with the, with the state and their liaison engineers.
So there wouldn't be any maintenance, uh, plowing, shoveling, or anything until the winter of 2020?
Correct. We were, we frankly had planned this to be, you know, in, uh, we, we would have liked to have been in design at this point in time. We had a chance of maybe getting it done later this year, but, um, I think right now, where we're at in the process, I, I really don't see us going through the whole process and getting it designed and actually into construction, at least all of it.
What do you think, just as an estimate, the added cost will be each year to maintain the sidewalks that will be ours to maintain in front of the high school, in front of Pettibone, and I don't know, how about whatever part of going up the hill? What, you know, what's, I mean, I know there's a cost for, oh, there's a cost for clearing off down by the riverfront, and there's a cost for...
Dan was probably the better person to answer that, cause he does most of the sidewalk clearing. He could figure, uh, for the stretch in front of the high school, which I think is about, uh, you know, like, a little over 1,000 feet, my guess is it'd probably take them, um, I would say, you know, on average, probably half an hour or so, a storm, half an hour to an hour of storm.
What, the same thing, they clean in front of the river?
Yeah, they have tractors that have either plows on them or snow blowers, um, which can gently clear off the snow pretty quickly.
Facility barn nearby the high school. How about down by Pettibone, where, do they have a facility there where they have their tractor?
They, they have the tractor.
They're not gonna go driving down the road, are they?
Yes, Dan does around there as well right now. That's a little bit more, I mean, that's probably a similar amount of sidewalk overall, um, so again, it was probably about an hour.
But still, it's in addition to our, our bottom line. That's why I'm just, you know, there's always added costs.
So, so to our first and our second, or is it, do you guys want to bring this back?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to.
With some questions answered? Is that kind of consensus, everybody?
I think that we have enough people missing that we might want to. I'd like that.
But I think, I mean, just...
That'll work.
We've had it since 2017, I don't know.
Okay, so we need the, the first and the second to withdraw.
Was I second?
I withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, and then what we need to bring back is the costs of maintaining the sidewalks? Okay.
And Mike, would that be designated to different, um, town offices? Like Park and Rec would be in charge of it, Facilities would be charged as schools. How would that work out? Who, who would designate, what needs to be cleared? Cause Park and Rec already has enough on this plate. They don't need another couple of miles of sidewalk.
It would be whoever maintains the property currently. So Pettibone is Park and Rec, or we help, we do some of the parking lot. They do generally do the sidewalks similarly to downtown, uh, Millford as well. They do sidewalks around Town Hall here, Richmond Center, Library, um...
How about Pettibone?
Ones in front of the, you know, on the greens, uh, in front of Pettibone, you know, they, they do that now, so they would, they would do that. In front of the Board of Education, uh, down at the high school would be the Board of Education's people that would, that would be responsible for that.
And then there'd be, will there be part of going up to Canterbury? Would part of that be the town?
No, I don't think there's any town private, homeowners, and most of its, frankly, most of its canaries. And Canterbury is a...
There must be some when you, yeah. But they'll all be advised of this coming if it goes through?
Canterbury is certainly very supportive of this project, too. I think they...
Yeah.
Also, we could, uh, the next, uh, we'd bring this back, we'd have a more definitive timeline, uh, on the project as well? And what else did, uh...
I'd like to ask for maybe a, a little more specifics on whether this is, um, truly an appropriate use of, you know, it's been brought up a few times, Matt.
I agree with Katie, and I agree with knowing what the deadline is that we have to tell the state we're in or out.
Okay.
I'm, I'm more than happy to write a legal opinion on that. Just remind you that as with all special appropriations, with respect to landfill settlement fund, this body's only making a recommendation. Board of Finance could approve the appropriation and take the money from elsewhere.
And lastly, with the new, with the new, uh, charter revision, the $400,000 request, does that now trigger a town meeting?
It does. It's, uh, one, it's 28 of 1 mil, which is currently, uh, Mr. Ospeau has told me about, I believe, just over $361,000.
There'd be three, uh, things that if this project was to move forward, it'd have to go through town council, Board of Finance, and then a town meeting.
That's right.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody have anything else tonight? Dr. Mull?
So let's ask the Director of Finance to give us all the options for where this $400,000 comes from. This was his recommendation, which is fine, but there have to be other options. Got you. So let's have him explain that two weeks from now.
But we would not have to go to referendum if it got put on the budget and we could, if we could tell the town after July, June 30th, tell the state after June 30th, then we wouldn't have to have a special meeting, cause it'd be part of the budget, gets voted on by the town anyway.
You're, uh, if you're spending more than $360,000 outside of what's been budgeted for the year.
No, I'm saying this budget for the next fiscal year. If, if we can wait that long, it gets budgeted for next fiscal year, then we don't need a special meeting. The town votes on it anyway, cause they voted on the budget. Is that correct?
I, I, I don't know what the grant parameters are, but it sounds correct.
So we'll bring back the recommendations, the different options at the next council meeting as well.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, is it favored?
Aye.
Close. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.